I'll now call the Monday, March 12th, 2018 Zonie Board of Appeals meeting to order. And our first order of business, I'll ask that everybody stand face the podium. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. McLean, we have a little call to do.
Ellen.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Did I pronounce your name right?
Yes.
Crewby.
Here.
Buz. Eulard.
Here.
And Evans.
Here.
And Kirby.
Here.
One more, McAlpine.
I've not heard from her, she was going to be absent.
We'll give her a few more minutes, and if not, perhaps we'll entertain a certain alternate who is in the audience to sit.
Well, then you can appoint her to some kind of like lifetime committee or something, you know, if she's absent.
We do have a quorum. See, we haven't agenda before, so are there any proposed changes or adjustments?
Just added some correspondence I received this afternoon from a resident, so you should all have copies of that.
Gotcha. We do, this is a comment for our first case, sir. Okay. All right, there being no additional proposed changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Close? Okay. We do have our agenda. We have our meeting minutes of December 11th, 2017. The board received those in our meeting package, we've had a chance to review those. Are there any comments or corrections? Hearing none, Mr. Crewby? Okay, good. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Okay. Crewby and Anderson. And at this point, since this board does consist of seven members and only six people are here, but our alternate is in the audience, I'd like to ask our alternate, Mr. Crewby, please have a seat. Mr. Crewby is an alternate here, but because he is serving in absence of a permanent member, he has the full responsibility of a permanent member on this board. Thank you for attending. And we're working on getting the name plate. Sounds good. Okay. So our first item for appeal is application for property 3179 Kipling. Mr. McLean, do you have a summary you could talk to us about?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure. He's got a single-family home with a detached garage, proposing to construct a new residence with an attached garage. The existing structure is only about eight feet from the adjacent dwelling. So the applicant would be approving the existing nonconformity with his proposed new build. It would increase the distance between dwellings to just over 10 feet. So he's seeking a variance for the 10 feet between dwellings rather than what's required by ordinance, which is 15.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do any members of the board have any questions for staff? I do have one, so I do see that the proposed side setbacks for this house look to be 10 and a half and 5 and a half.
Yes, sir.
Is that compliant with that portion of the ordinance?
Yes. It has to be at the 15 between the 11 and 5 on one side.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to step up and tell us why you need your variance?
Well.
Please give your name and address for the record, if you would, sir.
My name is Don Swanson. And my address?
Yeah.
3703 Donnelan, Rochester Hills.
Thank you, sir.
I'm trying to build a house that's a little bit more, goes along with the rest of the new houses being built in the city. A 20-foot house is very difficult to design, bedrooms, and that type of thing. A 24-foot house, I can make it work better. My parcel would be completely in compliance. My neighbor is just a little bit closer to the lot line than he should be, so that's why I'm seeking a variance.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Sir, thank you very much. I'll ask you to have a seat, I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. At this point, I'd like to ask any members of the public, if they would like to address the board, if they'd please step up to the podium?
I would, sir.
Sure. Could you just give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Brian Arnoldson, I live at 3169 Kipling, from the neighbor.
So you live in the house next door?
Yes, sir.
To the south.
So I have a few problems with the distance. I still think it's too close. And also, the length of the house is going to block my back view. And also, there's drainage issues that I think will be exacerbated by the length of the house. That property is higher than my property and my other neighbor's property, and it holds water. So, and then there's the noise factor I have an issue with, as well as, you know, they want to put a sliding door, it looks like, right on that side of the house, you know, right next to my sidewall. And I already heard noises when they opened it, from even inside their house, so.
Okay.
Those concerns.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I'm concerned with my property value because of those issues also, you know.
Okay. Off through?
And a fire hazard also being close.
Anything else? Just want to hang on, any members of the board have any questions for? Okay.
I will get one quick question. Mr. Allen. You stated that there's some water problems because that property that we're discussing tonight and yours are uneven. The property on the corner is higher?
Yes.
Okay. By a lot or enough to make it?
Enough, like my other neighbor, I kind of solve my problem with a little bit of drain tile and stuff. And, but, he has a pond in his backyard, mostly your.
Okay.
Pretty good size.
I can relate.
And it's also wet behind my garage, also.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any additional members of the public that would like to speak on this panel? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion. Mr. McLean, I do have some questions, perhaps staff could clarify, if possible, in regards to some of the comments we heard from the neighbor. He mentioned he had concerns, at least either from four items, more than four, but perhaps you could talk a little bit about how code might address the, well, number one, the length of the house. He addressed drainage, noise, and also indicated a potential fire hazard. Or if staff at this time could kind of tell me that, or is this the first time probably for?
Yes. I believe the code, you'd likely have to, the applicant would likely have to have firewall when you're less than 15 feet from your adjacent dwelling. Didn't see any issues with the length of the home. Drainage wasn't something we looked into, but that's certainly something I could have a D W director take a closer look at.
Okay. Yeah, and regarding drainage, would that be something that for any structure that's built in the city, the city automatically looks at as part of the construction process? Or is that something that you have to look into?
I'd have to look into that, I'd be looking for that with our building official, we're seeing tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I have no more questions. Do board members have any questions or discussion comments? Mr. Allen.
Yeah, we were looking at this, by the way, I was just looking at the elevations that were shown on here, and there is about three tenths of a foot difference between the lot on the corner and lot 583 next door that the gentleman was just talking about. When I looked at this and then drove by the house and took a good long look at it, it's a little bothersome for me as well, even though the situation offset is getting better, I still, it's being exacerbated by the fact that it's not going to be a one-and-a-half story house, it's going to be a two-story house. And that's going to really close that wall individually on the next-door neighbor, and my first thought that popped into my head was, you have a 5.5 offset on the south side and a 10.5 on the north side, what if those two dimensions were flipped? It would get him to the 15 feet away from the house that he needs and save him some money on a firewall, even though we don't consider that. But I would rather see it encroach towards the sidewalk than towards the next-door neighbor's house. We have an opportunity to fix a problem here.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Crewby? I have a few things. I live on a corner lot, so I know what corner lots come up. The first thing that I saw was the north and south elevations of the house. It's 60 feet long and approximately 18 feet high to a gutter line. That's a lot of wall to be looking at, especially so close to a home like that. The other thing, parking, a lot of the newer homes that are built on corners, there's not enough parking, there's not a parking space between your garage door and the sidewalk. And I've heard a lot of complaints about people seeing blocked sidewalks and that type of stuff in the city. And I was looking at this, and it seemed to me, a good way to do this would be to separate the garage from the house. Push it as far back to the back of the lot as you could, and as far to the south as you could, do a firewall on it, and get it like from two feet or so. That'd give you about 18, 18 and a half feet of driveway space, so you could park two cars, or if you want to wash your car or whatever, it's not out in the street or hanging over a sidewalk. So just a thought, and looking at this, I think he could still, within the 35% of land coverage, he could still put up a house near the square footage he was doing anyways, even though he wouldn't be building over the top of the garage. And I just, it just seems to me, because that 60 feet of wall is a lot of wall.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from any of the board members?
I'll say that I had the same thought about flipping the dimensions, I'd rather see 15 feet between the houses and less distance, since this is a corner lot, acknowledging that there is an issue with the driveway. But again, I guess I'm troubled by the, we continue to hear this, this 24-foot house has to be, the width that has to be used to be practical, and I guess I'm still on the fence on that issue. But is, you know, is that something that we've granted in the past, and is there a precedent set for that type of thing? And then, the other thing I would ask is, I haven't sat through a corner lot issue, have we been able to grant that smaller setback on the roadside and have that work out as far as code?
So you've got two questions, and maybe I can defer to Mr. McLean for the first one, because I have the same. Do you know, or can you check if a reduced setback along Beverly will be permitted by the code? I can find out. Okay. All right. And then, the other question that Mr. Evans brought up, was there precedent for something like this? And I, you know, other board members feel free to chime in if you remember particular cases, but I would opine that even if there is precedent, this board isn't bound by precedent, and we have the flexibility. But if any other board members recall something, wants to break up?
My recollection is the last time we had one of these, it didn't fly.
Did it?
I don't think so. I recall, it was towards the fall last year. I had a question as well, I was, and it might not be particularly relevant, but I'm wondering if we have any information as to how the night before we came about in the first place?
My guess is that a lot of those homes predated the existing dwelling requirements. I did spend a little bit of time on G I S, and there's a number of houses on Kipling that do not have 15 feet between them. Of course, those measurements are unofficial, but I've seen a few that are less than 10.
Mr. Eulard was correct, we did have one come before us that had to have an absolute minimum of 24 feet, and it didn't fly well, I think at our last meeting I had mentioned that they were actually able to put two homes on those lots by adjusting their positioning setback-wise and knocking about a half a foot off of each home. So those were at 23 and a half foot instead of 24.
Mr. Crewby?
Yes, I was just wondering, do we know what the side setback is for that, for the side room? What is the maximum setback allowed off of that building right there? And looking at some of the other properties there, and I do agree, both these properties were built before our setback issue. The one next door is pretty much just as old as this one, almost.
With the, you have to have a five-foot minimum side yard setback?
Even on the corner?
I believe, minimum of five on one side. I believe it's even on the corner.
Yeah, that'd be my concern too, this is one of the members brought up, suggesting perhaps that house be moved north may eliminate the need for this variance to accomplish what they're seeking without the need for a variance to potentially protect the property itself as well, so, and it's why it's important.
There's more than a few along that strip that is roughly five to six feet away, not the one right behind, but there's one across the street that's close, one or two blocks down, that's fairly close to that down.
And there's no driveway at all?
Yeah.
Doing that.
Right.
Excuse me, what comments?
May I add something?
Not at this point.
Okay.
The public comments closed.
Yeah, that would affect the parking heavily. Well, you'd be losing five feet.
You'd have seven feet. Can you guys clarify?
You're talking about, if you move the house over towards the corner?
To the north.
Switch the setbacks? Then there'd be a problem with the driveway?
You'd have seven feet.
As opposed to the, from the road? Yes. Or from the sidewalk. About a five-foot difference.
You could get nine if you, if the north or the south line of the building was all consistent, you know, I mean, if that two foot was taken and put on the other side.
I guess the other comment that I've heard tonight was that, I'm sorry, you three?
No.
The other comment I heard tonight, I thought, would deem exploration would be as if you have a detached garage, to address the parking, because I do agree, clearly anyone parking on the private property here is going to have to park parallel to Beverly. There's just, it's just not enough depth to put a car in the driveway without doing that. So I think that's a design consideration as well, that might be explored.
Our lots here really are not conducive to having an attached garage with a 24-foot house. If you'll notice, most of the houses being built around town right now, every one of them has a detached garage. And I think it's for that very reason, because of what Mr. Buz brought up about parking nightmares.
A lot of the corner ones have been putting attached on.
So here's a few thoughts, just jumping on that same bandwagon here. We've got 5.1 from the other house to the lot line, so let's just say we don't look for the variance over there, just keep it at 10 instead of the 9, 11, we could go back really to keep our 15 feet. But let's just go 10, so that picks us up another half a foot. So we could in fact have the house six feet off of the side, the north sideline, and then if we did detach that garage, the rear of that garage can really be 18 inches from that lot line with the firewall now. Is that, that is correct, right?
I believe so.
So.
Absent of ease to the.
Even if there's not another property over there?
The sideline. So if the back of his garage went to the south, that foot and a half off the lot line, that would be a fair amount of space there, that would pick you up another seven feet or so.
So perhaps, what I think, if I visualize what you're describing, is that if it was detached, if it was tucked into the, would it be the southwest corner of the property?
Sure, where it's at now.
Yeah. Perhaps that could address.
It could move further south, which would allow you more space between the sidewalk and the door.
Yeah, I see where you're going with that, because we're going to take this structure, just visualize and push the whole thing. You mentioned it's a 60-foot elevated leg, and 60 feet along.
Right, 60 feet along that.
So that's what we do in vehicle, actually, or a 40-foot lot, if we come in a foot and a half off the one side, another 20-foot of garage, still leaves you with 16, 17 feet there.
And I think we'd have to check, because if I'm not mistaken, in order to go to that 18 inches from like the south line, it has to be detached.
Yeah.
Oh, so you were talking about.
Yeah, because the house will be pushed.
Exactly. And it'll allow back yard. And it'll allow back yard.
Yeah, yeah.
Same space.
And really, really take that two-story off it.
Yeah, and it offers no backyard.
Second story.
Yeah, it's just so close, similar to the, another one we had, although it's just, even though it's a ranch, it seems very close, two stories, that long.
So there's options.
It does appear there are options, at least I hear. Mr. Allen?
I just did a quick calculation, and if the second story on the garage were removed with the rest of the structure there, you have a 1728 square foot house. That's a pretty good-sized house.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. So, Mr. McLean, if I could, I'm not sure if you were feverishly checking, but did we get clarification on the setback from Beverly?
I've been catching up on my notes, let me grab my ordinance book.
Okay.
Give me 30 seconds.
All right, if there's something, we can answer quickly, otherwise.
I'll be, 30 seconds. Grab my book.
I know on my home, I put an addition on a number years ago towards Cambridge, and I'm probably six feet off the property line with it.
Yeah, there's quite a few houses like this, off the Donnelon Street.
Gotcha. So I think totally, you gentlemen suggest that it's probably, it's probably okay. Yeah. I guess we can be safe, it's best for the board.
So if they have total of 15 feet between the two on your side. Let's see. Rear yard, butts a rear yard, exterior side yard setback shall not be less than 10 feet. It's for exterior side yards on corner lots.
Gotcha. Okay. So they're required to have 10 over there.
Okay.
So we could still shift 5.5?
It would still be a area. If it was five, it'd be, I think, right.
It's a five-foot side?
No, he just, could you repeat what you said with the exterior side yard?
When a rear yard butts a rear yard, the exterior side yard setback shall not be less than 10 feet.
So to me, that sounds like, if you concur that 10 feet is required along Beverly.
Yes.
All right, so he's close to the minimum. I'm assuming that.
When a rear yard butts a side yard, the exterior side yard setback has some guidelines. If you have a distance from your rear lot line structure of zero to five feet, no structures are permitted. Five to 35 feet, you have to have a 25-foot setback, and greater than 35 feet, a 10-foot setback is required.
And this is if I'm not mistaken, rear rear, in other words, the people to the, their rear lot line, which is their west lot line, is the back lot line for the people on whatever the street is.
Yeah, one street.
Okay. Wait for it. Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Good information. Any more discussion from any members of the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to continue with this process.
Just to recap what we've been discussing here, based on what Tim has just read here, the most that that house could be shifted north would be a half a foot. To give it the minimum of 10, then we pick up, would be a six foot on the other side from the lot line to the house, coupled with 5.1 on the existing property next door.
I believe that there are some factors that satisfy our standards, but I think the one that, you know, number five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. I think we've heard from what I believe is probably one of the most, if not the most affected property owner in the area, and for a host of reasons, that individual was opposed to this, I'm reading into that, that they do believe that they adversely impact the surrounding properties. Some things I've heard tonight in regards to the scale of the elevation that's going to face that way, as well as the setback. I'm not convinced that this request satisfies all our standards, and based on that, if there were a motion to grant, I, without further discussion, I would not vote for one to grant.
Do you have one additional question? Suppose this house, this existing house were torn down, and a new house in the exact same footprint was built, would a variance be needed for that?
Yes, because you'd be eliminating the existing nonconformity, but in building a new house, you'd be creating a new nonconformity.
Right. They would remove their vested right to have that. Once the nonconformity is removed, anything new has to be built according to code, unless, of course, they come back here and ask for variance.
In my view, it's difficult, because it's, you know, I think anybody who went by that house would agree it's kind of nice right now, and, you know, the builder is in some ways doing some good things, but there are alternatives, and I don't see how we can prevent that.
One of the things that, as I'm looking at this even shifted, like we're talking about, some of the things that come across our desk are things like air conditioning units and now generators. We really don't want to walk ourselves into a buzzsaw with those. We have been, in some cases, putting them in side yards, well, there's not enough side yard here to put something like that in, and adequately screen it.
No additional comments, I'll entertain a motion. Anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Who spoke?
I'll agree.
Mr. Allen.
I'll make a motion to deny this variance, understanding that there are some other options available, and not being able to see a situation where this could be brought into conformity.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Support.
Support, Mr. Eulard? Support Mr. Ullar? Any further discussions or comments related to this? Mr. Kirby, comments?
I don't, um, I don't, I don't, definitely don't support what we're seeing here now, but I don't believe, I think it would be extremely tough to get a house here that would conform, that wouldn't need a, a variance of one form or another. Uh, yes, we could go down to a 16-foot house or something like that, if that's what we needed to get it through, but for 20 foot, other than that, this, this lot's going to need a variance. That's all there is to it, to get rid of that house there. The board is, you know, he's come in here, he's bought the house and looking to do something with it. If it's not going to be him, it's going to be the next person or somebody. Sooner or later, we're going to have to do something with it. So I think either way, aside from making a very small dwelling there, that property's going to need a variance, one way or another, I don't hope we're going to gain anything to conform.
Okay. Mr. Allen.
Um, Tim, the, if this house were shifted over five and a half feet, that would require a variance, correct?
Yes.
But it still could be requested as a variance. There's nothing that pro gives that.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? I think we're ready for roll call vote. Ullar.
Uh, so we're voting in favor of Scott's motion?
Yes. Allen.
Yes.
Kirby.
Yes.
Butts.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Sir, I'm sorry, your motion to deny has been granted. You have not received your variance, it's been denied. Thank you for coming. Okay, our next agenda item is other business. Does anyone have any other business they want to bring up?
Uh, just wanted to state for the record that we had a really good training session in Oakland County. And Mr. Ullar was there, I was there, Mr. Evans was there, and Mr. Evans was there. And so were two-thirds of all the planning commissions and ZBAs in the county, I think. That was, they said 260 people, I think, signed up for that class, which is amazing. And it was very informative.
Yeah, I thoroughly enjoyed that training, thought it was very informative and would recommend that opportunity comes around for anyone in this board or anyone else in the city for that matter, perhaps planning commission numbers or liaison that they attend. Tim, thank you for letting us know about that.
I'm trying to get more money in our budget next fiscal year for training and development. I'll, I'll take all that I can get and, you know, hopefully, hopefully the board members would as well.
Yeah, sounds good to me. I know a well-trained board who's well-versed in their job is the best, best for the community. Any other, anything further business?
I just had one comment.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to bring up our member that stepped aside here since last meeting, Mr. Smith, served with us for quite a long time. I served with him for 13, 14 years on the board. I thought he did a good job for us and appreciated all his input and hope for that.
I concur.
As do I. I'll miss him and this is, his extensive knowledge of code and his precedents, and I was, I was surprised to hear the news.
I was too. Yeah, I always appreciated that the discussion wasn't quite getting started. He would help get that jump started and get the board wheels thinking. He explains very well. John, you?
I had one question. Do, do we know, is there going to be a liaison to the, is one of the board appointed at some, sometime in the future?
The city council will, they have not yet appointed a liaison. I expect in the next meeting or two, we will ask them to, to do so.
Good. Thank you.
Any other, anything else under other business, anyone? Okay. Liaison report, do we have any report from anyone who's serving as liaison?
Well, I'm the staff liaison to the planning commission. Uh, we're going to be starting up discussions on the proposed LaSalle development, probably in the, the April meeting. We're starting to discuss master plan update, where the city's looking to become engaged in the redevelopment-ready communities program through MEDC. So there's some training opportunities I've been pushing for planning commissioners to attend. We're also discussing developing a public participation plan, so our dance card for the planning commission is, is going to be pretty full, I think, you know, for the near term. So it's, it's all very good, very exciting stuff.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. Yes, I got to ask Tim one good question here.
Have we had a movement off of ground zero on the LaSalle development as it stood before?
I'm still awaiting a resumetal of some new plans. City's going to be bringing in, we brought in an outside consultant to assist us with completing the review. This will be done at the expense of the applicant. We've also just done a ordinance amendment to require, the city can require applicants to set up escrow accounts to cover any outside consultant fees or engineering fees. It was kind of vaguely addressed in our ordinance before, this kind of strengthens it. So that'll, that'll be a, a new practice going forward. But still waiting on a resumetal of, of plans for LaSalle, so stay tuned.
Anything else? All right, I'd just like to welcome our newest member, Mr. Crew. Thank you for your alternate. And Mr. Ullar, congratulations on your appointment as a permanent member. And Mr. Allen, as always, thank you for being our steadfast alternate. I think you've sat on just almost as many cases as the regular.
I think so too.
Yeah. All righty. Well, if they'll move on to public comments, is there any member of the public that would like to discuss the board?
Thanks, you guys. Hi, Rachel, thanks for the call. I have something for my question.
Oh, okay.
Rachel, thanks for teeing. I just wanted to say happy birthday to Steve.
Oh. Let the record show. Okay. I'll see you now, I'll bring him back to the board and, you know, call the meeting in turn. Thank you for everything.